Calling this evening's meeting to order. Hello and good evening, everyone. The invocation will be given by Chaplain Williams with the Clayton County Sheriff's Department, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand with me.
Let us bow our heads. Father, we thank you tonight, Lord, for the opportunity to come before you, Lord, to be your servants, to serve you. By serving your people, we pray tonight, God, for your speed. We pray for your wisdom. We pray for your help, God, to solve the problems that we face and to find answers, Lord, that will be a benevolence to everyone that we are serving. We pray right now, God, for every leader, every follower, everyone in this community, that you will, Lord, look upon us, God, from on high, and bless us abundantly. We pray this prayer in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the April 7, 2015 Regular Business Meeting. The Board will now adopt this evening's agenda. Before doing so, does any member have any amendments?
I think we have a resolution. Dietrich, did you brought?
Yes. Were there any others? I will announce the add-on resolution after I hear from the Board.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to amend to remove item number 31. Carry it over to the next meeting for the Housing Authority appointment.
Item number 31 is on page seven. Appointment to the Housing Authority Board to fill the expiring term of Curtis Green.
That was a form of a motion, so is there a second on?
Second.
Probably move him second, those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. We can remove him.
Were there any others? Hearing none. We did have an add-on request for an add-on resolution. This would be Resolution 2015-91. Resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a license agreement with the leadership and development of Our Youth Sports, Inc., to host its 13th Annual Southside Shootout at the Carl Rodenizer and Virginia Burton Gray Recreation Centers. May we have a motion to add this?
Motion to add, Ms. Davis.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Rooks, second. Probably move him second, those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
With the removal of item number 31 and the adding of Resolution 21591, may we have an adoption of the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the agenda with the noted changes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move him second, those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
Approval of the March 17, 2015 Regular Business Meeting Minutes.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes from March 17, 2015.
Is there a second? I'll second. Probably move him second, those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
We will now have public comment. Mr. Chairman, we do have citizens signed up to address the Board. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residence for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the Board.
Mr. Tommy Pye.
My name is Tommy Pye, and I'm a resident of Clayton County. I would like to thank Clayton County through you, the Board of Commissioners, as a governing authority, for the professionalism, service, and kindness shown to me as a new resident since November. I have availed myself of the services of my Commissioner, Senator Rooks, her staff, the Office of the Sheriff, the County Police Department, including code enforcement, the Water Department, the TAG Office, the Property Tax Office, Community Development, including zoning, and especially the Clayton County Zoning Advisory Group, who last night listened to a group of very passionate residents, and after listening to us last night, voted not to recommend the approval of a rezoning request from non-residents for Phase Two of the Lakes at Monday Mills. Again, Clayton County is demonstrating its commitment to the betterment of the quality of life for its residents. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Linda Ingram.
My name is Linda Ingram, and I'm a resident of Clayton County. I live in Riverdale. Congratulations on your award, Chairman. Chairman Turner and Commissioners, first of all, I have two or three things I need to say. Is Clayton, and I'm here about animal control, it seems like there's very few people that are interested in what goes on down there. We hear a lot about MARTA. We have heard a lot about the gangs in Clayton County, and that's fine and well, but please listen to what we're having to say about Clayton County animal control, because we are interested in it. Is Clayton, is animal control better today than it was last year, 2004? Ask your question that. Is it really better? Are dogs, more dogs getting out, or more dogs going to rescue, getting euthanized, or what? Just please think about that. On the fourth month, the fourth day, Clayton County Animal Control asked help to get the pits out. There were so many down there. In fact, I counted 43 on the fourth month, fourth day, 43 pits. Well, I don't know if all the pits got out or not, because we did not get any information. And here it is, Tuesday afternoon. We pledge, and we pledge money, we share, we do everything we can to get these pits out, and all I'm asking is to know if they got, how many got out? That's a lot to get out. But how many got out? And what do we need to get them out? I know there was other, there was other breeds also in there, but they were really asking for the pits. So my thing is, it's Tuesday afternoon. Why can't animal control or someone let us know, the people that share and really worry about these dogs, let us know? Because it's when I got here, and before I came, I says, "Anybody heard?" They said, "No." The dogs are not posted from Friday usually until today, before I got here. They were posted. I sent out emails. What is going on? No emails. Sometimes I think people ignore me, Commissioners. I don't know why. Maybe I'm persistent. Maybe they just don't like me. I have no idea. But as you know, I'm a fighter, and when I believe in something, I will fight for it. I'm not going away unless, unless you tell me to. But I really would, I really would like to know, and I think other people have said, also said they would like to know, to go ahead and post these dogs, because if they're all weekend, well, by Monday, or Monday afternoon, it's time, they're available. Well, they, if the shelter gets full, they're gonna die. They can die at any time. So people that are looking for their dogs, they're there all weekend, they really need to look for their dogs. Also, something that is really bothering me is this spaniel that I was looking at this afternoon in Take Force.
Excuse me, Ms. Ingram, I'm sorry. You have reached your three-minute time limit.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Aye.
We will make an inquiry about your questions.
Okay. And I, okay, I do need to talk to y'all personally, okay? This, I really do.
Okay. Dr. Henry Anderson.
Commissioners, in terms of crime in the county, there was a slight uptick in crime in 2014. Rough estimates are about 2%. And as you well know, that there are an increase in the number of gangs in this county of high proportion. Everything you are absolutely correct and right about the MARTA transportation system, the citizens that need public transit, the students that need transportation to the schools, the senior citizens that need transportation to get where they need to go, the people who do not have cars, who are in need of public transportation, and people who want to have an alternative source of transportation options. You have done a great thing by bringing MARTA into the county. It will do the good, everything that you say, every good thing and even more that you will, that you have said it will do. However, I am also right and correct that for the good that MARTA would do, there are some people that have undesirable actions, behaviors, and conduct that are not favorable. They tend to have lawlessness tendencies, they tend to want to do unlawful acts, they have negative characteristics and traits. MARTA will also benefit them, and just as MARTA would do good for this county, they will also use our transportation system as egress and an entry point into our county. All I'm saying is that as you work on the budget, the upcoming budget that you seriously consider, just as you support the Clayton County Police Department, its operations in terms of gang intelligence, and in terms of more police officers, that you look favorably upon the budget in this area. Because we in Clayton County, the citizens that are concerned with crime and gangs, we need protection. Like I said, it was a small bump in the crime rate the first time in three years, and this is without the transportation system. It will do the good that you said it will do. There is no question about that. But there are undesirable, people with undesirable characteristics that will use it as an entry point, and their motives, their intentions, and their motivations are not good for the citizens of Clayton County, and we need to be prepared. The threat is here, and we need to be prepared. We need to have our, be able to combat it with the same vigor and strength that we have done in the past. Thank you again, as always, for listening to my public comment on public safety. Have a great rest of the commission meeting, and thank you again.
Thank you. Carl Swanson.
Chairman Turner, Michael, Shayna. Glad to see the crew back in service again. As you know, I'm a former Clayton County resident. I have moved over to Henry County right now, but I thought it was time that I came back and just reminded both you and the people of Clayton County about the issue of that 100 million from the 2004 SPOLOST that's still sitting there, and nothing's being done with it. I realize, of course, there was one project left that could be, could utilize that, and that's that, that project over there on Mount Zion, but by and large, that money is, it was put out there by the taxpayers and really should be refunded to the taxpayers, because you've got these other SPOLOST funds that are doing the ongoing work of the road repairs, and that just sits there. It sits there because it was apportioned, and since the apportionment has pretty much run its course, and you've only got this one left, I'm asking for the people of Clayton County, for the, my former neighbors, for everybody else, that you take a very serious, close look at doing something with this. In addition, I want to make you aware of something that you may not have been aware of before, and I mean no offense, Shayna, I really don't, but Article One, Section Nine, Clause Eight of the Constitution clearly states that we should not have anybody in a position of trust or, or an office that has a title of nobility, okay? How does that apply? Every bar card carrying attorney that we currently have on staff, hired or elected to office, is an esquire, and esquire is a title of nobility. It states so within their own law books, okay, within Black's Law. We have to look at this, because you guys have a responsibility to the oath of office that you took, and the oath of office can only be adhered to if you look closely and adhere to this one part, okay? No office of trust or profit can be held within the government by the people holding these titles of nobility. And that's, that's about all I wanted to say, but I also wanted to say, I want to thank you all for doing such a great job, and you really have been. It's a pleasure to watch from afar, and I know you're making great strides in this county. So when I come back, I'll try and give you whatever I can to assist you in your endeavors, because I'm really proud of you all.
Thank you. Tina Smith.
You would, please, I'm sorry. If you would, please just pull the mic to you just a little bit.
State your name and county.
My name is Tina Smith, work for Transportation and Development. I didn't know I was signing up to speak at first. I thought we was just signing in and sign in, but I would like to talk after the meeting, if that's okay.
That's fine.
All right.
Thank you. That was an easy one. Curtis Whitehead.
I signed everybody.
Okay. She's signing everybody up. Yoshe Borgia.
Good evening. I'm here today because I saw the reposting of the position for Director of Economic Development on our county website, and I can only assume that the candidate we were hoping to hire is no longer available. Is that correct?
Turned it down.
He turned it down. Okay. Well, as we move forward with this search, it's important that we do not repeat the mistake of hiring an unqualified person to fill this important job in our county. The first step in mitigating the risk of hiring an unqualified candidate, though, is revising our job description. The current job description found on the county website and on external websites does not set forth the criteria that will yield a high-quality professional who will help redevelop and revitalize our economy. So let's look at that job posting. Firstly, we're setting the educational bar too low for prospective candidates. We are expecting our candidate to have a minimum of a bachelor's degree in business, marketing, or closely related area, and at least six years of experience. Most cities and counties require at least a master's degree in economic development, in public administration, urban planning or related field, with at least six years of experience in economic development, community development, or redevelopment activities. A CECD, which is a Certified Economic Developer's Certificate, alone is not enough to assure that we have a qualified candidate. Additionally, from the way that the job description is written, from the way it's written, it seems that we're looking to hire someone who is a researcher and a manager of plans rather than an implementer of them. If we're gonna hire a high-quality director, the job description should explicitly state the key minimum job requirements or functions of Economic Development Director, and those are to: Design and implement county-wide business development strategies that will help to revitalize distressed commercial corridors; promote retention and expansion of businesses; address barriers to economic growth. Additionally, the job description should explicitly state that our director is responsible for developing and implementing strategies to attract new businesses, increase capital investments, and expanded employment opportunities. Additionally, the job description should reiterate the collaboration between local, state, and federal organizations to promote sustainable economic development across all business clusters. The last thing that I would like to ask is that all of the finalists be requested to make a formal presentation on their vision for our county. This important presentation would provide a valuable insight into how...
Excuse me. I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. I would like to give you basically what I've written, as well as the job description. Now, this is not a complete job description. These are just the addition of the points that I'm making and the, what is currently written on the job description.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
We will now have a proclamation.
Whoa, 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 we got one more.
I'm sorry.
Quinn Howard.
My name is Quinn Howard, and I'm a resident of Clayton County. I would just like to thank the Commissioners, Chairman Turner, and Mr. Colley, he's, I don't see him, but anyway, for allowing me to get back in the library to complete, to almost complete the tax season. However, I am requesting, or I'd like to request, April the 15 be the deadline, but thank you all so much. And one final thing that I'd like to say also, because for whatever reason that I was no longer allowed to be at the library, I would like to see if there would be another location, perhaps, that you all can provide to help prepare taxes for the upcoming season, because again, I state, usually from January the 31st until April the 15th, I average about 500 people, and it is a volunteer service, and we do really appreciate you all for everything that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we will have a proclamation whereby Clayton County recognizes Judith Bradbury for her community activism. Is Ms. Bradbury here this evening? If you would, please, if you'll come forward, as well as any family and friends. I would also ask the Commissioners to rise from their respective seats at the table and join them for the presentation of the proclamation.
Happy anniversary. Happy anniversary.
How you doing? How are you doing?
Thank you.
Oh, hey. How you doing? Good. Thank you. [inaudible] Okay. Anniversary. Anniversary. 36. 36 years.
Chairman, push in the back.
Oh, three, one, two, three, again, one, two, three. Last time, a smile. Okay.
And the proclamation reads, Clayton County recognizes Judith S. Bradbury for community activism, whereas Judith S. Bradbury is an involved and dedicated resident of the Elon Farm subdivision located in Jonesboro, Georgia, and is a native of Augusta, Georgia. And whereas Judith S. Bradbury is proud of her community and takes great pride in supporting the county by doing her part and going above and beyond. And whereas, Ms. Bradbury became an inaugural member of the Friends of Independence Park Committee, working tirelessly with Commissioner Shayna M. Rooks and Director Dietrich Stanford of the Clayton County Parks and Recreation Department by participating and developing ideas to better the park and the community around it. And whereas, Ms. Bradbury has initiated her own personal charge in cleaning up her community along Point South Parkway. She is often seen picking up trash along the roadway and dumpster diving if she has to find the identity of persons illegally dumping trash in our county. And whereas, Judith is a dedicated organizer and volunteer providing proactive community support in the organization of spring cleanups and countless nonofficial roles of participation with her Elon Farm Homeowners Association. And whereas, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognizes and honors Judith S. Bradbury for her outstanding commitment to the community. Now therefore I, Shayna M. Rooks, Commissioner, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby call on all citizens to join me in recognizing Judith S. Bradbury for her community activism. Through the dedication of citizens such as Judith, our communities are able to thrive, and Clayton County is a better place in which to live, work, and play. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed the seventh day of April in the year 2015. Shayna M. Rooks, Commissioner.
Any more citizens like Ms. Bradbury?
I don't know about that dumpster diving.
I do want to thank some other people in my community. Patsy Britt also goes out with me, and recently Rick Borden, the manager of Point South Apartments, joined in the effort to keep Point South Parkway clean, so.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
It's gonna be presented by Nicole McGee Hall, CPSM.
Good evening. My name is Steve Burman, O.A. Development, and this is Nicole McGee Hall. We are involved in the formation of the new CID in the I-285 Riverdale Road area, Phoenix Boulevard. I am a property owner in the area. My company is a property owner. We own nine buildings on the Phoenix Boulevard area, and Nicole is the consultant we've retained to represent our interests. CIDs were formed, the first CID was formed in the 1970s in New York City when Times Square was struggling under the burden of urban blight. The entire area was falling apart, and the building owners took it upon themselves to try to help, the work hand-in-hand with the government in turning the area around. They levied an additional tax on themselves, and they used those extra tax dollars to bring in grant money. Together, they worked in making what we all know now to be Times Square, one of the preeminent urban entertainment areas in the country. CIDs then were used all over the country, and they've been used extensively here in the Atlanta area. In the metro area, we have now over 20 CIDs. If you like, if you like the perimeter center area, you can thank a CID, the landscaping, the extra ingress and egress off of 285, the low, the low incidence of crime, that's all due to the CID there. The Atlanta Braves, like it or not, they've moved from, they're moving from downtown to Cobb County, and it was the Cobb County CID that played a major role in attracting the organization to invest close to a billion dollars in the area. We are looking to create a CID that will ultimately partner with the Camp Creek CID and help turn around this area of ours. We think that we can be bringing in close to $300,000 to perhaps $400,000 a year in monies that will go to fighting the situation of blight, addressing issues of public safety and marketing, and we think, we've been told by CID experts, that we should expect to be able to leverage those CID dollars at a rate of either, from between four to one to, up to 10 to one. In other words, for every extra dollar we bring in, in this additional taxation, and we should expect to bring in additional government grants at a rate of between four to one to 10 to one. This will make a significant impact on the property values in the area. This should make a significant impact on Clayton County's perception, and Clayton County, by the way, is the only county in the metro area that has yet to establish a CID, so we're very much excited about working with Clayton County on this. We have, we, part of our area is in the city of College Park, and our brethren at College Park have stepped up and agreed to invest $50,000 in this effort. The Clayton County Development Authority has agreed to invest in this effort, and now we're here before this august body, asking for your participation. And now we're here before this august body asking for your participation and help in getting this started. We are certain when we tell you that the benefits will far outweigh any kind of investment that is made initially right here tonight because we know from experience and watching this all over the metro area and all over the country that this is one of the best proven urban renewal tools in our toolbag. So we're, Nicole's going to talk a little bit about where we are in the formation process and what we've got left to do in front of us. Thanks.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. So I am Nicole Hall with Nickelworks Consulting. Steve has pretty much done my job for me a little bit and pretty much said a lot of the information. I know that you all are aware of CIDs, so we didn't want to go into a lot of detail about that. But we wanted to tell you where we are in the formation process. So.
Excuse me, Nicole, but just for.
Oh, for the general body. Okay. So a community improvement district. CID as we refer to it is a self taxing district where the property owners agree to voluntarily tax themselves for improvements in a certain boundary. I sent a packet to all of you also. You see the initial proposed boundary, which he says is basically in the I-285, the Sullivan Road area, the Phoenix Boulevard area, Riverdale Road, West Fayetteville Road, and then also at the top in the Camp Creek area near the Georgia International Convention Center. So, and then it goes down Riverdale and West Fayetteville Road where the commercial properties are. And then it extends east a little bit to the South Ridge Industrial Park. So that's the initial boundaries that we were focused on right now. And so those are the areas that we're looking to improve through public safety beautification as well as transportation improvements that may be necessary. So to date, we've actually already gotten consent forms. Okay, so we've been working on this process since October. We've actually done a feasibility study to just make sure that it would be feasible. And that's how we came up with the amount that is shown that we believe will be between 300 and 400,000 dollars based on the property owners that have consented. And so we have reached out to the hotel area, the industrial parks I mentioned, as well as the Phoenix Boulevard property owners. And though I don't, I have all the consent forms with me. I just brought those. But we are well on our way to making great progress because these people have consented already to being a part of it. The next step in the process is to get what we call jurisdictional approvals. College Park has done this before, obviously with the Airport West CID. And so at this time, we've gotten the commitments that Steve has mentioned. And so we're here to answer any questions that you may have about the process and to see if you all would be willing to donate to this effort as well. So that's, like I said, there's a lot of information. I'm here to answer the question, any questions that you may have. But I just kind of wanted to get, give you a broad overview and see if you.
All right, any questions from any of the board members?
I have a question for our staff regarding the prior approval of the CID in Airport South.
Chief Coles.
Airport South CID, previously we approved 50,000 dollars for Morse Burger, I think that's his last name. Whatever happened with that? I think it encompasses the same area.
It is the same.
Okay, so we paid 50,000 dollars for another group. What happened to the money?
That was entered into, I believe, last October when the board finalized the agreement. I believe it was two months ago that Mr. Morse Burger appeared in Ms. Barnes's office and had conveyed to her that he had been unsuccessful in being able to recruit interest from business owners and that he wanted to return money, unspent money that, that he hadn't used to the county. And he was seeking to just return the money and we wanted to see what work he had done. Chairman asked us to conduct an investigation. Ms., Ms. Bivens and Ms. Barnes and I met with Mr. Morse Burger and we demanded the return of the funds, demanded the work product that he had done. We've reviewed it against contract and reviewed invoices which he has, which he submitted as justification for cost, you know, that he charged off against the 50,000 that he had, that he had received. He returned, he returned almost 24,000 dollars. We, we waited at that meeting and did not leave until he produced a certified check from SunTrust Bank and that was given to Ms. Bivens and she deposited in our account. The Finance Department has completed an investigation or review of his invoices and has produced a list which, of invoices which Ms. Bivens's department does not deem as justifiable expenses. We are, we were waiting on that, we were waiting on completion of that investigation from Finance in order to complete a thorough report and produce it to the board. In the meantime, what was happening concurrently, Ms. Nicole had contacted us and wanted to come speak to us about her efforts. And it turned out that many of the things that we were told by the other gentleman regarding interest in the community, the business community there, were, was not true. Frankly, there is a lot of interest from business owners. I conducted a meeting and the chairman attended one of the meetings also where we met with the business owners, met with Nicole, we have met with Nicole twice. And frankly, the report that was given, some of, some of the things that were told to the board, I pulled the minutes of the meeting, which the first presentation was made to y'all in November of 2014 before I came on. And some of the presentations, representations that were made there at that time, subsequent evidence leads me to ask a lot of questions and they'll be contained in my report, which we will complete and all three of us will sign off on and you'll be getting it. But I can tell you that everything that we have been able to, we've asked Nicole many questions and we've asked the business owners many questions. And I can tell you that there's been, the representation that was made to us about interest or lack thereof was simply not true. There is a lot of interest and these owners are, business owners are highly motivated. The Phoenix Boulevard area is extremely crucial to our revitalization and economic redevelopment plans going forward. It represents some of the best commercial real estate property the county has and is simply one of the, one of the key areas that we should be building, directing a lot of our economic redevelopment energy and effort toward, given its location to the, the airport and given the high paying jobs that tenants renting or leasing property from these property owners could attract. So.
Is it Mr. Bearpen? Did Mr. Morse Burger get into contact with you guys?
When we, 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 as I mentioned, we own a number of office buildings on the Phoenix Boulevard area. And when we, two years ago, when we started seeing occupancy rates slide in that submarket, we said this is counterintuitive. We're, we're experiencing an economic recovery throughout the country and in metro Atlanta. It's moving slowly, but we shouldn't see our numbers going down. We should see them going up. So we started exploring with people in Clayton County, the Development Authority and in College Park, what we could be doing differently. That's when we first started to learn about CIDs. Somebody introduced us to Mr. Morse Burger. Mr. Morse Burger said, I'll spec my time. I'll help you get this going. After a number of minds, the business owners, the property owners in that area that I was involved, that I'm still involved with, decided we didn't, for a variety of reasons that are, it's not appropriate to get into here. We decided we did not want to work with Mr. Morse Burger. And we said, stop working. You don't represent us and we're going to go about this methodically and choose a consultant that we think will represent our best interests. We chose Nicole and we're very happy with the work that she is doing and her firm is doing for us. And unbeknownst to us, Emery had come here when he no longer had any sort of imprimatur, any sort of approvals from us and represented to you all that he was working with us. We were as surprised as anybody else when we discovered that there had been funds forwarded to him. And it's quite an egregious act he has made and we're going to leave it to the county to sort this out. In the meantime, though, we still have to press forward with this project. And College Park has stepped up, the Development Authority, as I mentioned, has stepped up. And I want to make clear, the business owners, we've, we've all put in close to 20,000 dollars into this effort to get this going. So everybody's got skin in the game. And, you know, the, life, what, life is what happens when you're making other plans. This, this, this is a hiccup in the road, but we can overcome this.
Commissioner Rooks, I want, I want to correct something I said. I believe I gave you the wrong date. I said September, October of 2014.
It's 13.
It was 13. I apologize.
Okay, so for clarification purposes, College Park investment is 50,000.
Yes, sir.
We initially invested 50,000 as well.
Correct.
We have recouped 24,000. We're going through the legal process to recoup the remaining 26 from him. But we would have to allocate, reallocate the 24 and then invest new money in the form of 26,000 to accommodate your request.
Yes, sir.
I know this is just a presentation and not a debate or a budget item, but and forgive my cynicism, my cynicism, it has nothing to do with y'all, but a year, year and a half ago, when the former proposed CID was brought before us with the 50,000 dollar request, as I recollect, they told us that they had the buy-in and consent from several business owners and from the city of College Park and were working on the Airport West CID at the time, only to find out that, that may or not be the case. So maybe you can explain to me what a consent form is, is that binding? And exactly what have you got from the city of College Park and the Clayton County Economic Development Authority? And then one last part of that. The, the request for the 50,000 originally was to fund the initial feasibility study and ground efforts to solicit those consents, which again, I want, I think it's great that we could all work together, but if the money has already been expended to those efforts, then what is this 50,000 dollars for?
Okay, if I miss a, if I miss an answer to your question, just help me repeat it. The first thing is the former consultant started working on the Airport West CID, which is in the, on the Fulton County side, which is adjacent.
That's what he told us, as I recollect.
I'm just saying it's adjacent to this one. He started that process, but he was let go. And they actually went through a process to hire someone else. I actually was the person selected when they hired it. So he did not get it certified. I did. I then served as their administrator for six months until they found an executive director. I knew nothing about all that he was doing on this side. The only thing that I knew because I had been working very closely with the Eretropolis was that initially he was trying to do the CIDs concurrently. But because I'm involved with the Eretropolis, I knew that the property owners were not interested and then some of the people on the Airport West side had some issues as well. So when I came on board, I didn't do anything with the Clayton County side. I was focused on just getting the Airport West up and running. And a lot of people just in communication were saying, well, we're going to see how this one does. So that one's up and running. If you understand that in the district, for Commissioner Hambrick, where Camp Creek is, it goes from Fulton County to Clayton County. You know, most people don't know that. The same thing for Best Road. So I actually was a part of hiring the landscaping and the cleanup and the situation came in about, you know, being on both sides. And so that's when I said, you know, we definitely need to move forward. But I did not approach the owners because I was working with the West. Then they decided that they were ready to move forward and then they put out an RFP. I then gave a proposal and then they hired me. So when I came up here, the property owners, I can't tell, I can tell you that I have run into a lot of people who were not pleased with the actions of the previous consultant, but I don't see any work that was done. I actually have forms here from people that signed it. We're having a major stakeholders meeting on next week. The Sheraton has agreed to host it just free of charge because they are, they have agreed to consent. People have to, the consent form is a sheet that they have to sign. It's a legal document that I have to present to the Tax Commissioner and the Tax Commissioner has to certify that this is the owner and this owner is the authorized representative for this property. I mean, it could be a delegate. And then he has to then say that we'll take their taxes. So I have, me specifically, spoken to people. I have talked to some people. They have mentioned that they had talked to this person previously, but they were not, he was not under contract with them. I did not talk to anyone until I entered into an agreement with the Royal Phoenix Boulevard's Property Owners Association, which is the organization that is kind of doing this. So the effort that he's talking about, I don't know what he did because I've been doing a lot of work since October. As far as there's a research, there's a planning and feasibility. That's how I came up with the map. That's how I came up with the numbers to see if it was going to be worth the time and effort to get it done. I was, I received nothing from anyone else. I basically started from scratch.
Great. So what is, so is there a step between the executed consent form that you're soliciting and going to Tax Commissioner? Or is that the final step to get the CID added to the tax bill for those particular parcels?
The next step is actually a resolution from each jurisdiction that is represented in the boundary. So there are only two. It's going to be Clayton County Government and City of College Park. In the Airport West, just so you understand, it was four. Okay? And each jurisdiction just has a resolution. I would provide that from the legal attorney that we deal with and basically saying, we consent to having this and the Tax Commissioner is consenting to receive the funding because the, all money, it's on your tax bills. No one pays any money until, the funding that you're doing now is for the effort and the outreach. But the money that the property owners pay comes on the tax bill. The Tax Commissioner, once he collects it, he then sends it back to the CID Board of Directors. Okay, so the next step is for us to turn in all the consent forms to the Tax Commissioner. He will certify that we have the majority of the property owners that represent 75% of the value that's within the district. So that's my job to maneuver and make sure that, you know, we have all that working. And then he will give it to you guys for the resolution. But at the same time, because the county is a certifying agent, once you all do it, then I have to go to Clayton County, excuse me, to College Park. They will do the resolution. They've done it, you know, on the other side. And then at that point, there has to be a caucus. We have to notify every property owner. I mean, we've notified all the property owners now. And, you know, some people aren't agreeable. I mean, just in honesty, I mean, but there are plenty that are. The Weston is a huge, you know, supporter and we're waiting on their consent form. We have the South Ridge Office Park who clearly told me that they did not want to do it. They did not want to deal with the previous consultant. And just recently, as of last week, they are signing in all their properties. That represents 54,000 dollars of revenue for that industrial park. So I can't tell you much about what happened before, but I can tell you about what I have actually been doing.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
When you're speaking, will you please say the business property owners?
Yes.
So the residents, right. Residents won't think it's their property.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is only for the commercial property owners, office, retail, commercial and industrial.
Within that district.
Within that district. All the money has to be spent on improvements within that district. It cannot be spent. And so basically the property owners agree to have the burden of paying the money, but the entire community benefits from it, for the record.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I mean, did I answer all the questions? Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. We appreciate the presentation.
I have a question. Now. Well, I guess this is with you and with legal and all. Once we find out how much money we are getting back from the previous person and all, and the resolution, which comes first? Our consideration of the remaining funds or the resolution?
The resolution is.
Down the road.
Down the road.
Okay.
The consideration of the funding to support the formation so that the process can continue on so that we can get all of the consent forms and everything.
The money is, allows them to continue the work.
So what's the timetable then, that the county is waiting its? All right. So what's the timetable then, that the county is waiting as far as getting reimbursed? Or have we just lost that?
I don't think we have to necessarily wait to get the money back. I think it's going to be legal action taken. So that's what it sounds like. And it may take years. So I don't think we should wait for the balance. If we're going to do it, we should just agree to do it and budget that.
All right. Any other questions?
No, but I do have a thought. If we've got the $24,000 odd back from the original consultant, certainly the money we allocated, but with regards to the rest, has the College Park actually given you $50,000?
Yes, sir.
They already have?
Yes, sir.
Or they just said they would?
No, I have a check. I have a copy of the check. And so, and the Clayton County Development Authority as well.
Okay, never mind. I don't have any other comments.
All right. Thank you.
The board will now consider requests of Deborah Brewer, Director of Central Services.
Good evening. Central Services has five requests.
Yes, take them all together unless you, any of the commissioners choose to leave one out or take separately. Here are none.
I just have questions for number one, if somebody's here to discuss it.
All right, take them all together.
Okay. The first one is recommendation for award for RFP package 1461, Clayton County Juvenile Court Diversion Program. It's an annual contract. The bid opening was January 20, 2015. The recommendation is pursuant to section 21362 of the Clayton County Code of Ordinances. The recommendation is for what to the most responsive, responsible proponent, meeting the specifications, providing the best valued services, which is E&amp;A Incorporated, doing business as Neco, located in Jonesboro, Georgia, with a total cost per program participant not to exceed $1,538.36. The second is request for contract amendment for fence installation at Clayton County Parks and Recreation Department, awarded by the Board of Commissioners on January 6, 2015. The recommendation is made pursuant to section 21364 of the Clayton County Code of Ordinances. It's for Clayton County International Park and is to add the installation of fencing in a gateway at the Clayton County International Park. Funding is available through the Park and Recreation Department's SLOSH Fund for fiscal year ending 2009. The third is a recommendation for award utilizing a statewide contract to purchase video surveillance and audiovisual materials with installation and for the Information Technology Department statewide contracts, SWC 9999, SPD, SPD 000480010. The recommendation is made pursuant to section 2136 of the Clayton County Code of Ordinances. The recommendation is to approve the purchase of the video surveillance and audiovisual materials with installation and configuration services in the amount of $49,894.14 with Summit Systems located in Breeford, Georgia. The funding is available through the Information Technology SLOSH Fund fiscal year ending 2009. The fourth is a recommendation to amend consent of assignment of annual contracts, awarded to Stevens Rock and Dirt Incorporated in College Park, Georgia. Stevens Rock and Dirt Incorporated has merged with Stevens Industries LLP and requests assignment of the following contracts, RFP 1248, Clayton County Transportation and Development Stone Material Services Annual Contract approved by the Board of Commissioners on December 4, 2012, and RFP 1404, Clayton County, Georgia, for Department of Transportation and Development, Landfill Earthing Material Services Annual Contract approved by the Board of Commissioners on July 15, 2014. The final is a recommendation for award of asbestos abatement, removal, and disposal for the Clayton County Senior Services Kinship Care Resource Center. Recommendation is made pursuant to section 21364 of the Clayton County Code of Ordinances. The recommendation is to approve the purchase in the amount of $2,482.50 and award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, CJ Hearn Construction Company, located in Atlanta, Georgia. Funding is available through the Senior Services Development, Community Development Block Grant, fiscal year ending 2012. The department's recommendations, bid, tabulation, summary, vendor quotes, and agreements are attached for each request for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the recommendations, authorize the chairman of his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contracts, and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Probably moving to second. Are there any questions on any of the items?
Yes, number one, Clayton County Juvenile Court Diversion Program Annual Contract.
Mr. Johnson.
Good evening.
Good afternoon.
Okay, just to make sure that I'm clear, the program is for the summer between May and September. Well.
It was originally supposed to start in January, but the original vendor was seeking more money than the grant allowed. And so we had to start over.
The grant is for how much?
$100,000.
Okay, so that would represent the 25 youth? It's between, I'm sorry, 65 youth, between 16 and 65 youth.
Yes.
That they could, they said they would be able to take.
That's correct.
Okay, it says that the bid for Youth Advocate Program, Inc., had the highest bid, but they weren't responsive. But there's no documentation as to why they weren't. Why weren't they responsive?
I didn't receive that information.
Ms. Brewer.
They were not able to provide the services to the number of youth within the timeframe required at the cost. Their costs would have exceeded the maximum amount of the grant, which is $100,000. And so they were not willing to adjust the number of participants or provide it within that short timeframe that was required.
Okay, all right. That's what I needed to know.
That's it.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Mr. Adams.
This has to do with fencing at the International Park for the item number two. And I'm just trying to get my head around, we already fenced that playground. It's in the 248 feet. So explain to me what fence got, would we have an accident or something and someone knocked it down?
No, sir. The first phase actually was fencing around the first playground. This initial fencing is to complete the back part of that playground structure. So it's actually fencing in the whole complex. The initial phase that we did did not actually enclose the entire playground structure.
So when you originally put this out to bid, you put this out to only half fence the project?
Based on funding at the time, the first funding source was our general fund. And the second phase is inclusive of the 2009 SLOSH program.
And that new playground doesn't have a fence all the way around it right now?
No, sir. What you see is temporary fencing on the backside, that yellow fencing. And then the black fencing is what took care of the first phase. What we're doing is fencing it all the way around with all the black fencing.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Here are none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you.
The board will now consider the request of Ramona Bevins, Chief Financial Officer.
Please take them together, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have five items for your consideration this evening. Budget Amendment 2-23 is for the prison. It's to amend the budget in the amount of $3,075 to recognize additional revenues and increase fines for safety supplies and to purchase a defibrillator. Budget Amendment 2-24 is also for the prison. It's to amend in revenue in the amount of $36,837 received from the State Department of Transportation Road Maintenance Agreement for the purchase of new moors. Budget Amendment 2-25 is for the Federal Narcotics Condemnation Fund. This is to establish a budget in the amount of $177,957 from seized drug funds to purchase a mobile command post for the sheriff's office. Budget Amendment 2-26 is also from the Federal Narcotics Condemnation Fund to establish a budget from seized drug funds to provide tuition for selected police officers to attend the Leadership Academy at Atlanta Metropolitan State College in the amount of $35,000. And the last item is Budget Amendment 4-115 for 2009 SLOSH to amend the budget in the amount of $137,400 to provide funding for the PATH Foundation to design and plan the Parks and Recreation Greenway Trail Network. This includes the master plan, Lake Spivey Golf Course Trail, and the multi-use trail in and around International Park.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moving to second. Any questions on any of the items?
Yes, I have a question. I guess this, yes. Now, how does this differ from the plan that we were presented with some weeks ago?
The funding part of it.
Yeah, so the PATH Foundation presented out the actual overall project agreements as to what could happen in each respective district. This is actually showing the indication of the work that will take place, that we already done some of the construction documents and planning around International Park to include as outlined, Lake Spivey Golf Course, Virginia Stevens property in International Park. So it's talking specifically how are we going to do the construction documents at this particular location.
So this has actually started then in this district?
Yes, ma'am. The board approved the project agreement for this project.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Here are none. Those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you.
The board will now consider a request of Renee Bright, Human Resources Director.
I have one item tonight. The Department of Information Technology requests a reorganization of the department that includes deleting 25 positions and creating 24 with an effective date of April 25, 2015. This reorganization is requested due to the adoption of new technology and initiatives that have been implemented by the department. Job responsibilities need to be changed to include redefined work focus, job functionality, requisite training and knowledge needed for the positions. And I'd like to note that no current employee will lose their position. They'll all be moved into the new positions, with the exception of one who is retiring. If approved, there will be a savings of $1,100. And we also request that you authorize the CFO to amend the budget as necessary.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second? I'll make, second the motion, probably move to second. Any questions?
I have questions.
Commissioner Rooks.
Mr. Lavender. The classification titles and specs for the positions, were they created to mimic the qualifications of the employee that you intend to put into the position?
They actually are.
Speaking in the mic, please.
I'm sorry. Those employees actually do those jobs now. Actually, we've, when you adopted your budget, we began migrating our staff to meet the requirements of the new technologies and systems and organizing them thusly. And these job class specifications match the current jobs they do and will carry them forward as we adopt new technologies and migrate legacy systems to what was approved in the SLOSH for the new, for example, the CGS Maintenance and Support, the Enterprise Maintenance and Support, and any other technology that will become part of that.
Okay, so this is a replication of what they were already doing?
That's correct.
Okay. For the person or for the position?
For the position. That's what we did. We started changing the way we operated as we adopted these new technologies, so they were required to do different things. One example of that might be to go out and map out business processes for a department as they plan to move, for example, the finance, budget, and human resources portion of that enterprise system. So we're already aligned to do those things and we're doing those things now.
Okay. That's it.
Any other questions? Here are none. Those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you.
The board will now hear from Kristi Barnes, Chief Staff Attorney.
Please take them together. Which one?
73.
Mm-hmm.
Take the first one separate and do that one first and then the rest collectively.
Thank you. Good evening. First is Resolution Number 2015-73, which is a resolution to adopt an amendment to the Clayton County Board of Commissioners Group Medical and Dental Plan as it relates to eligibility for post-retirement medical and dental benefits for eligible participants, to authorize the chairman to execute any documents required to implement the amended plan and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget as needed to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moving to second. Are there any questions?
I do. Mrs. Bright. Help me understand this. From your email on this topic last week, this is to include disability retirement for people who are eligible, because there was some, was not clear as to who was and wasn't. So you said that in 2001, the legislation was not the intention to include disabled employees with less than 15 years.
Right.
But this says that we're going to have to, you want to include them if they have less than 15 years. So this is, so we changed our intention as a body?
This amendment would allow employees that qualify for a disability pension, that they would be eligible to retain their medical insurance. As it's written right now, if you have, if you were hired on or after January 1 of 2002 and you retire for any reason with less than 15 years, you're not eligible to maintain your medical insurance.
I understand that. I appreciate you explaining that to me again. But back to my question, from your email, you said it was not the intention of that legislation from 2001 to include them if they have less than 15 years.
It was not the intention to exclude them from being eligible to retain their benefits.
That's not what you wrote me.
Okay.
It says it was not the intention to include disability retirees.
In.
However, the current language doesn't carve out them, so it needs to be fixed.
In that amendment, not to include them in the amendment is.
Could you state that again, please?
It wasn't the intention to include them in the amendment in 19, excuse me, 2002.
Right. But now you're proposing that we do include them. We changed the intent of the previous legislation. Am I seeing, how am I not seeing that? We're looking for a change of policy.
Yes.
That's what you're asking for?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, so let me get this right. So the definition of somebody who is retired from Clayton County is somebody who has at least minimum vesting, which is seven years. Is that right?
For retirement, yes.
Okay, so if a person who is, so the definition of a retiree is someone who's worked here for seven years or more and chooses to retire?
Yes.
Right?
Right.
So 15 is really, if it's less than 15, it's just another way of saying anyone who's worked here for seven years or more? Or can they be working here for less than seven years? What I'm trying to get at is if we've got firemen that put in 32 years and then they start getting taxed for benefits they can't receive, but we've got someone who works here for seven years and a day and they suddenly get lifetime, life accident, disability, dental, eye insurance, I'm not sure that it's fair to those of us that work harder or longer and it has an additional cost after speaking with the finance department to us than what we're currently paying. So we're asking for a change of policy. I'm trying to understand why you're asking for a change of policy and how that's fair and how we can absorb the cost.
Well, since 2002, we've not had a person that's applied for a disability that has had less than 15 years.
I read that.
So it's not a regular occurrence. So it's not, so it's not a, a regular occurrence. But for someone that has been approved for a disability retirement, they have, they meet the requirements under Social Security as being totally and permanently disabled. And certainly, those individuals are individuals that need medical coverage. And, um, this would allow, as long as they meet the requirements of the pension plan for a disability retirement, they would be eligible to maintain their benefits.
Which is having worked for seven years. I think this is...
Right now.
He's raising the same questions I asked, right? So it's seven years. So, an, an employee could be here for seven years, get disabled, retire because of a disability, and be able to keep all benefits for the rest of their life.
That's right. That's what she's saying.
Do they pay for these benefits?
No.
They do.
We would.
What did you say?
They pay for their...
Okay, thank you.
They pay for the employee portion, but the county picks up the majority of the tab.
That's correct.
So it would cost us. I don't have any further questions.
Any other questions? All right, here are none of those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three to it, fails. All right, take the rest collectively.
Yes, sir. Next is Resolution Number 2015-74, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a cooperative lease agreement and memorandum of understanding on behalf of Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services with the Georgia Forestry, providing for rural fire defense under the provisions of the Forest Fire Protection Act, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement on behalf of the county and otherwise to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number 2015-75 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept an award of the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant and WAVE grant authority to Clayton County Public Schools to authorize the chairman to execute all documents necessary and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. This is a grant in the amount of $75,000, which is awarded by the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. Resolution Number 2015-76 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a license agreement with We Need to Read Incorporated, providing for the terms and conditions under which the food trucks at the beach event will be held, hosted at Clayton County International Park, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. This will be an event consisting of a car and motorcycle show, barbecue contest, concessions, live musical entertainment, and amplified music on May 17th, 2015, from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Resolution Number 2015-77 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a license agreement with the Clayton Henry Chapter of the National Action Network Incorporated to host a 50-year celebration of the Civil Rights Movement at Clayton County International Park, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. This event will be September 12th, 2015, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Resolution Number 2015-78 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a license agreement with Macabean, Georgia, to sponsor and host a 5K walk and run and Filipino Independence Day celebration at Clayton County International Park, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. This event will be June 6th, 2015, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Resolution Number 2015-79 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a license agreement with Keeping Girls First Incorporated to utilize the sports pavilion at Clayton County International Park, to host a volleyball training session and a volleyball tournament, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. This event will be May 3rd, 2015, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Resolution Number 2015-80 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a license agreement with Swim Across America Incorporated to utilize parking lots at Clayton County International Park, county resources, and personnel in connection with its open-water swimming event, to authorize the chairman to perform, otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. This event will be May 3rd, 2015, from 5:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Resolution Number 2015-81 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to trade Glock Generation II handguns for the purpose of upgrading to Glock Generation IV Model 22 handguns with no financial impact to the county, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number 2015-82 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into two grant agreements with the United States Secret Service Financial Crimes Task Force, providing for the terms under which equipment and training will be purchased, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreements and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. This is a grant in the amount of $750 with no matching county funds required. Resolution Number 2015-83 is a resolution to authorize the formation of a 501(c)(3) tax-exempt nonprofit organization to be known as the Clayton County Police Foundation, to authorize the chief of police as the chairman's designate to solicit sponsors, to authorize the payment of costs for the formation of the foundation, to authorize the chairman to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number 2015-84 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept grant funds from the Firefighters Support Foundation on behalf of Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services to purchase needed equipment, to authorize the chairman to accept the grant funds and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. This is a grant in the amount of $20,000 to be used to assist the department in purchasing four thermal cameras with no matching funds required from the county. Ordinance Number 2015-85 is an ordinance to amend the code of Clayton County, Georgia as amended, specifically Code of Clayton County, Georgia, Part II, Chapter 18, Building and Code Regulations, Article IV, Permits and Certificates, Section 18-47, Fees, by deleting existing subsection D-1B and substituting in lieu thereof a new subsection D-1B, Residential Building Permit Fees, to amend Chapter 18, Building and Code Regulations, Article IV, Permits and Certificates, Section 18-47, Fees, so as to add a new subsection F thereto relating to plan review fees, to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions, to provide for severability, to provide an effective date and for other purposes. And the Board should have received a revised ordinance Number 2015-85, which will show the creation of a new subsection F instead of a new subsection E. Ordinance Number 2015-86 is an ordinance to amend the code of Clayton County, Georgia as amended, specifically Chapter 38, Environment, Article 8, Clayton County Stream Buffer Protection Ordinance, Division 2, applicability, Section 38-143.2, exemptions, so as to delete the existing subsection B and substituting in lieu thereof a new subsection B, so as to add a new subsection G thereto, to allow the construction of multi-use trails, to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions, to provide severability, to provide for an effective date of this ordinance and for other purposes, and for other purposes, I apologize. Resolution Number 2015-87 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to execute and forward a letter to the Federal Highway Administration in support of a pedestrian sidewalk improvement project proposed by the City of Lovejoy, and to convert .28 acres of right-of-way of the Clayton County Landfill Park for transportation use. To authorize the chairman to execute the letter, to authorize the director of the Transportation and Development Department and the chairman to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number 2015-88 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to submit a grant application to the Department of Family and Children's Services on behalf of Clayton County Senior Services, to provide funding for parenting education, to authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents on behalf of the county, and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. This is a grant in the amount of $75,000. Uh, matching local funds is required in the amount of $25,000, which can be contributed in the form of staff salaries. Similarly, Resolution Number 2015-89 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to submit a statement of need grant proposal to promoting safe and stable families on behalf of Clayton County Extension Service, to provide funding for parenting education, to authorize the chairman to execute necessary documents on behalf of the county, and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. This is a grant in the amount of $60,000. The county would be required to provide $15,000 of matching funds, which may include a cash as well as an in-kind contribution. Resolution Number 2015-90 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a real estate purchase and sale agreement with Tri-Rat Anaram Temple Incorporated for the conveyance of approximately .312 acres of right-of-way previously abandoned by the county, to ratify the authority of the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect appropriate revenue sources and, appropriate revenue sources and expenses, all as may be required, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. And last is Resolution Number 2015-91, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a license agreement with Leadership and Development of Our Youth Sports Incorporated to host its 13 annual, 13th Annual South Side Shootout at the Carl Rodenizer and Virginia Burton Gray Recreation Centers, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. This event will be Friday, April 17th, from 6:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m., and Saturday, April 18th, from 9:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Uh, second. Any questions? Any of the items?
Yes.
I have two easy questions. On 2015-83 regarding the formation of a 501(c)(3) tax-exempt nonprofit organization, why do we need board consideration to create a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization?
Good evening, Commissioners. A good question. I've been working approximately two years with the, uh, legal department, uh, trying to establish the framework for this particular initiative.
And this is more of a legal question, so...
Okay.
Essentially, it's to ensure that there is a distinction between Clayton County government and the Clayton County Police Department and this 501(c)(3) organization, that they will be separate entities. And so we wanted to, and there are other models with the City of Atlanta and other jurisdictions around the country where their governing authority has provided, uh, permission or authority for the formation of a nonprofit organization.
So again, back to my question, why does a government entity or organization need to provide permission to start? I mean, I can go open up one in my backyard right now. I mean, why do we need to approve it?
Because it pertains to one of the county's departments, and they will be soliciting donations and looking for financial resources separate from the police department and the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, so legally, why do we need to authorize? And again, what I'm saying is, maybe I'll answer my own question. Are we gonna have our salaried police department working during regular hours? Are we gonna be compensating them to work on this nonprofit?
No, they will not.
Are we, as a board, going to be the founding board of directors of this nonprofit?
No, it will be a totally separate...
So if it's a totally separate, then I go back to, why do we need to approve it? We're not offering salaries? We're not authoring, authorizing any other 501(c)(3)?
That's correct. Um, in part, also, it is to ensure that the board is consenting to the possibility of receiving donations from, uh, this 501(c)(3) foundation. They did not want to go out and create anything, uh, with the Clayton County or the Clayton County Police Department's, uh, name or affiliation without this board's...
Without it. So on Resolution 84, right behind it, we're gonna accept some grant funds from the Firefighters Support Foundation. Did we approve that nonprofit to be created in order to accept funds from it?
Uh, the, the Firefighters Support Foundation, to my understanding, is not a part of it, the Clayton County...
I agree with you, but back to the logic of what you just said, this is gonna be a completely separate entity from Clayton County, but we needed to approve it to accept funds?
And also...
But that's also nonprofit, separate from us, and we didn't approve it to accept funds. So I, again, back to my original question, why are we even considering this?
The, the Firefighters Support Foundation is, it has nothing to do with Clayton County, Georgia, or the Clayton County Fire and EMS.
And neither would the 501(c)(3) tax-exempt nonprofit organization known as the Clayton County Police Foundation. According to what you just said, it's a completely separate entity.
It's a completely separate entity, but the police department does not want to go about the process of creating anything that would in any way bear Clayton County's name or be affiliated with the police department without your authority, and also, they're asking for...
I feel like I'm beating a dead horse. I'll just wrap this up, and I apologize if I'm not being clear, but the Clayton County PD couldn't be affiliated with a nonprofit without our consent, right? But you just said it's a completely separate organization. So how can you be separate but affiliated? And since we're not serving on the board, but they're a department of this board, who's gonna be the board of directors of this completely separate nonprofit?
They have been advised by the legal department to seek the assistance of a pro bono attorney that will help them to form who their board of directors will be, to help them, uh, do their certificate, their incorporation with the Secretary of State's office, to form their bylaws, separate from...
But it's your legal opinion as our legal department that we need to consider giving them permission to do that, even though it's completely separate and non-affiliated?
Yes, because, you know, it is affiliated with Clayton County.
How?
It would be the Clayton County Police Foundation.
A completely separate nonprofit 501(c)(3).
That's correct.
So what's the affiliation? He said, he just said, "We're not working on, on salary or during, during, during county time," so what's the affiliation? I just don't understand.
The foundation, as I understand it, will work with the Clayton County Police Department to solicit, uh, funding sources, donations from citizens in Clayton County, Georgia...
Like a boot drive?
Like a, I'm sorry...
Like a boot drive, standing on the side of the road with a boot to collect money?
No, 'cause they're not working, they're not working on duty.
All right, no further questions.
This is the same setup as Atlanta.
I'm just trying to understand the technicalities of it.
Oh, you ask a valid question, but is this the same, hold on, say, is this the same structure as Atlanta Police Foundation?
I'm not saying it's bad, I'm trying to understand it. I guess, but I'm not... I guess, but I'm not getting answers, so...
They're also asking you for some funding to...
Which would come back to the budget amendment after this is approved, right, Mrs. Bivens? So that's, this isn't a request for $1,000, this is just telling us that they're going to later ask us for $1,000 if it comes back.
They're asking for a thousand...
It says for $1,000 in the back.
Not necessarily $1,000, Commissioner. We're saying it might be up to $1,000, it might be $500 for the state, and I think there's another associated cost deals with the Department of...
It says the board allocates $1,000 to be used to pay the cost of incorporation.
I don't have any other questions.
Secretary of State who controls the corporation for the state, so our, the 501(c)(3), as well as the Secretary of State who controls that part of the fees, schedules or what have you.
No.
501(c)(3) are from the IRS, but that doesn't matter.
I have a question. How can we allocate taxpayer dollars to form a 501(c)(3)?
Well, that's a Ms. Barnes' question.
Okay.
Would it come from taxpayer fund?
Yes.
It comes from the general fund.
Fund is still in place, we can, I mean, you know, again, just talking to some of the other agencies, they've managed to be very successful with this particular initiative.
And I'm not against it at all, I'm just trying to understand, and that's a great question.
We want to authorize the police chief to, you know, take a thousand dollars out of drugs, and we can legally do it, you know, I don't have a problem with that, because I think it's support what we're trying to do under the COPS platform, that we're trying to do it, augment the shortcomings of our budgets and so on and so forth, again, partnering up with the business community and faith-based and so on and so forth.
I think it's a noble effort, Chief, I'm not disagreeing with any of that.
I'd like to research the funding source to make sure that you can use money from the general fund for this purpose, so I would like to look into that.
So can we pull it off?
No. You don't have to come forth, Major Green. I think I'm about to hear a motion from Commissioner Rooks to pull it.
Yes, I move to pull Resolution Number 215-83 for further consideration.
And I'll second it, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose, it's unanimous.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, and I only have one other question on 88. And this is, it's just, I just want to make sure I understand, number 88 with the $75,000 of grants from DFAX, matching local funds of 25,000 dollars in the form of staff salaries, the impact, according to the internal attachments, that'll have no financial impact to the county because it's just salaries. So my understanding that this is going to be an additional service by existing staff, and that if this grant, for some reason in the future, isn't renewed, there isn't going to be a request to increase salaries or to pull them from the general fund?
Correct, we will not ask for additional salaries if this grant is not approved in the future.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is it for kinship care?
It is for kinship.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions on any other items?
I guess, this is a chairman and a Ms. Barnes' question. There's a letter to Chairman Turner from the Division Director, Mr. Thornton, that allows these grant funds to be given to the Clayton County Public Schools, but it's for a very specific purpose. It says specifically, "The activities proposed by Clayton County Public Schools in partnership with Rainbow House are to train school personnel to identify at-risk youth and refer, as appropriate, those who may be in need of additional resources and to provide after-school programming for all identified at-risk youths." But the MOU that we have with the Clayton County Public School does not recite that. Should we not amend it to ensure that the agency's consent for us to give it to the school system empowers them to do what that is for?
And I believe we have some documentation from the CJCC where they are providing their consent that the county waive the funds over to the public schools, so essentially, the county would act as a...
Pass through.
A pass-through. We wouldn't be responsible for administering the grant, that would fall to Clayton County Public Schools.
But in the MOU, it says, "CCPS agrees to ensure programs proposed by CCPS will benefit youth of the county." It's not just benefit youth of the county, wouldn't it be benefiting youth of the county that are at risk? That, shouldn't it just mirror what they are allowing the funds to be? Or is it just on them, once, if they don't do what...
It would be on them. They are assuming all responsibility and liability for the administration of the grant. The county would have nothing to do with the administration.
So if they don't do what the, even though it came to us, if they don't do what needs to be done, we are okay?
Yeah, that's included, that language is included within the waiver, correct?
Right, I do see that. There are just some discrepancies as to how the money will be used, but as long as it's not our responsibility, we're not liable, then I'm fine.
That's correct.
Any other questions?
I have one last one, on 215-80. That's a Parks and Recs question. We are going to provide this entity with four county vans and four employees, and they're going to pay us, so the amount that they're paying us, would that cover their salary?
Yes, ma'am. The rate is $10 an hour, as well as the mileage included on the vans as well.
Okay, so we lose nothing?
No, ma'am.
Okay, that's it.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye. Pose, it's unanimous, thank you.
Need an executive session for litigation and personnel.
Now, we'll hear from Jeff Matarco with a request for ratification of emergency purchase.
Jeff is on vacation with his family this evening. He asked for me to stand in for him. We've asked for ratification for the emergency purchase of services to our landfill compactor. The... Amount...
I'm sorry, could you please identify yourself on the record?
I'm Keith Rowling, Assistant Director.
Speak clearly into the mic, please.
Okay. I'm looking for the amount that he gave me. I was not expecting to speak on this this evening. For forty-one thousand forty dollars. Yes, forty-one thousand forty dollars and eighty cents to repair the diesel engine in the backup landfill compactor, and with the county code, Section 2-115, gives certain purchasing rights to, namely, the directors of the Department of Fleet Maintenance, Director of Department of Buildings and Maintenance, and Director of the Department of Information Technology, for special purchasing agents for their respective departments, and we ask that you ratify this purchase since it's over the...
Now, basically, the purchase was already made, the compactor went down, and it was a vital piece of equipment that needed to be operated at the landfill, correct?
Yes, it is. We have two compactors. One is limping along right now, it's the newer one, this is the backup compactor, the engine is down, they haven't done anything with it yet, but this is to allow us to move forward with having the engine removed and overhauled and get the piece of equipment back in operation, so that we can repair the primary piece of equipment.
It hasn't been purchased yet?
No, ma'am.
Why are we ratifying it, then?
Because it's over the $35,000 landfill.
It's emergency purchase.
But ratification means you've already done it, and you want us to approve it after the fact.
Now, who put that language in there? Ms. Barnes, did you write that in? Ratification of funds, since my understanding that they had, they were going to go ahead and purchase it.
It's purchased, isn't it? Are you talking about the landfill compactor?
The repair part?
My understanding is the purchase...
That was mine as well.
But because of the dollar amount, and it was, that it was able to be purchased with Jeff Matarco as a special purpose purchasing agent, he's the Director of Fleet Maintenance, and so the purchase has already been made for the repairs, but because of the dollar amount being over $35,000, it needed to come back to the board for you all to ratify the purchase.
Okay.
So, we understand you filling in. From my understanding, it had already been purchased.
Okay.
So, any other questions?
Do we need to make a motion before we ask any questions?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
I'll second it, probably move to second.
I have a question, and this is a technicality, I don't mean to harp on this, but I just want to get it clear in my head, and I'm looking at Ms. Barnes, because she's the one that gave me the advice, but, with the legal opinion, when, recently, we could not delegate, or the landfill authority could not delegate their ability to set tipping fees to this board, and your advice was that we had to allow them to set, or allow them the authority to set, because it was theirs to begin with.
Right.
So if it's their authority and they set the fees, then why are they coming to us and our department as Director of Fleet Maintenance, asking for us to pay for this at all? Shouldn't that be a solid waste board authority, board ratification?
It was purchased...
It's their equipment.
But it was purchased by Fleet Maintenance.
Well, maybe it shouldn't have been.
Well, it was, so maybe we should, he should go back and redo that, but at this point, Fleet Maintenance purchased it, and that's not the landfill. I don't know why it was purchased out of Fleet Maintenance, and not the landfill.
The county will be reimbursed for this purchase through the Enterprise Fund. Typically, when we do repair work on landfill equipment, then it's billed to the landfill. So, because...
Because of the emergency, so we're ratifying an emergency purchase, and we should expect to see a budget amendment intergovernmental from the Enterprise Fund in due time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's a great explanation, all three of y'all. Everyone is nodding now.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose, it's unanimous, thank you.
Item number 30 is an appointment to the Mental Health Developmental Disabilities and Addictive Diseases Community Service Board to fill the unexpired term of Keisha McPherson and a new full term. Ms. McPherson is no longer a resident of Clayton County. The term is for three years, expiring on June 30th, 2018. Does the board have any nominations this evening?
Yes, we might do.
Hearing none. Item number 32 is an appointment to the Development Authority Board, Redevelopment Authority Board, as well as the Urban Redevelopment Agency of Clayton County, these are items 32 and 33, for the unexpired term of Kenneth Stackhouse, he is no longer a resident of Clayton County. Both terms are for four years, expiring on March 1st, 2017. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations?
Yes. I nominate Tamika West.
Hold on, Commissioner Rooks, go ahead.
I nominate Tamika West. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Probably move to the second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose.
No.
Three, two have passed us. What was the name, Tamika West?
W-E-S-T-T-A-M-E-K-A.
Their full board appointment?
With there being no further business, there was a request to go into executive session for litigation and personnel. May we have a motion to do so?
Is there a motion?
Some move.
I'll second it, probably move to the second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose, unanimous, thank you.